We're going to call the school committee meeting to order 7:01. First thing we'll do is we'll pledge allegiance, so if everybody could please stand. Hang on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want me to wait? You mean here?
Yeah.
Grab the list.
Yeah.
Can I say something?
Do you want to do it now?
Yeah.
Sure. Yep.
Good evening, everybody. Nothing personal to anybody, or the school committee, or the school, the staff, but I'm going to be skipping out in a little while. I have a very important flight tomorrow morning, and I have to speak at a national convention tomorrow. So I can't be late for that, okay? So thank you.
All right. I didn't see two lists over there, there's only one. Okay. All right. So, thanks Eric, and good luck tomorrow. Is there any public hearing? We didn't see a list for signup. Okay. Not seeing any, we're going to move, keep moving. Approval of minutes from March 19th and March 27th, we can do them together or separately?
You don't have the 27th.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to table March 27th, minutes March 19th. Thanks for.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for March 19th, 2024.
All seconded up. Okay. Any discussion? The only thing I don't see is the attendance. So, I would just like to amend them and get, make sure that, oh, you know what? Well, public present is on there. So if we could just include who else was at the meeting? Generally, it says us, whether the superintendent, the president, the finance director, that sort of thing.
Okay. We should get, we should have those lists.
Where are you finding them?
Which?
You said the members of the public.
At the very end.
Oh.
At the very last page.
Yep.
Oh, I'm trying to find Katie, but we should be able to get that to her. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yep. So that was, that's the, one thing I noticed.
Okay.
The other thing I noticed. Anybody else have anything?
I'm fine by me.
Okay. So we will work to get the attendance on the top of that. Otherwise, the full, the body of the, of the minutes are acceptable to everybody? So all in favor of amending it to get the attendance on the top? Otherwise, we're good? Okay.
Good by me.
So all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Warrants. We have payroll number 120, 121, then vendor invoices, 1030, 1031, 32, 33, 34, and secondary 1115, 1116, and 1117. You can take them individually or as a group.
Take them as a group.
Okay.
I mean, I've already read them.
So are you making a motion?
I make a motion to accept them as a group. You want me to run the numbers?
Nope.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Before we go too much further, Jen, is there, do you want to come and sit up here? You tend to sit up here. You want to sit over there? Okay. I'm sorry, was that a?
I said, yes, I do.
Okay. And can, can we, is sound over there so she can be heard? Okay. All right. Gifts and grants. Do we have any gifts or grants?
None.
None. Okay. Moving on. Report of the Gilmaneugh representative.
Sorry, good question. Is public hearing going to talk about things from the public that I missed?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a line up in the agenda to talk about the threat notification that we received today?
There is not.
Could we speak about that? I'm sorry, a few minutes late, but is it possible to get some more information on the threat that we all received notice about?
Should we go back to the public hearing?
I'm going to defer to the superintendent. Is there anything else that you would like to share about the notice that went out today?
I sent a message out with the chief, a joint statement today.
And that's where you want to leave it?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Okay. So that, at this point, that's all we're going to be saying about this situation, about the matter?
Do we want to let him say something? Either way. I would like to let the public say something if they didn't get here right away or get, or understand the public hearing portion.
What I'm going to say is, so your question was, are you, are we going to hear any more about it? That's, that's what I'm answering. The answer is, at this point, no. So does that answer your question?
It answers the question, but doesn't satisfy the question, I guess. So I would just say, I mean, we're hearing rumors about poor representation from the principal. We're hearing poor response. We heard afterwards, the police were contacting, there was great response from everybody else involved. But I think I would be amiss if I didn't say that I would like to understand what's going on. Are there any repercussions for the principal? Is anything else happening?
So personnel matters are not discussed in an open session like this. There's a protocol that we would have to follow if people wanted to make a complaint or have longer conversations. There's a whole protocol that we have to follow for that. So that's not something that we would talk about right here in an open session tonight.
Okay.
And as far as I know, a statement went out. I know, you know, our chief is here tonight. We are looking to reassure everyone that the building is safe, and at this point, that's, that's where we have to leave it.
Could we have someone explain what the legal protocols are for when this type of threat is brought up? So we all have an understanding of what should happen?
I think, again, I'm going to defer to the superintendent if she wants to add anything else to this conversation.
I have no further comment.
Okay. So that's where it has to, has to stay right now.
So my suggestion would that you reach out to the superintendent and have a private conversation with the office up there. I think that's.
And I understand your point that it's not satisfying, but we are, we are bound by certain.
It's not satisfying, it's also, you know, I think there is not clarity on what should happen, and I think for myself, that's what I want. I want to know the clarity of what is the law in regards to these situations? If it's just left up to the school because you can have an ambiguous school policy, then let's deal with that. If there's a specific law around it, then are we following the law? That's, that's kind of what I want to know.
And I know that right now, there's still investigations happening, there's still conversations that are happening. So at this point, we are not prepared to say anything more about it. As you heard the superintendent say, the, the message that went out today, we want to make sure everybody is reassured and, and understands that our building is safe and that the students are safe. But at this point, that's all we can say. What went out today is all we can say about it.
All right. Who, I guess, okay. I'll think on that, might come back.
Okay. Thanks. Sure, if you feel necessary.
So I'm here, obviously, it's not my meeting, but we are more than happy to answer any questions that you folks may have. But you do have to understand, from the school boards, from the police department, and from the administration, we're dealing with juveniles. So there's a lot of information that we just cannot give out. We had a great meeting today. It was a very productive meeting, and there's plans in place to move forward. So, again, there's just not a lot of information we could give you because we're dealing with juveniles. As far as laws go and things like that, it's an investigation. We're taking it serious, the school's taking it serious. You know, this is new for Irving, right? I mean, nobody expected this, so just be patient, bear with us. And if you have questions about the laws, you guys can always reach out to the police department. The school's not going to answer legal questions, as I wouldn't answer questions about the school, so hopefully that's helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Okay. So I'm going to keep going with our agenda. We're up to the report of the Gilmaneugh representative. I don't believe either representative, unless I'm missing you in the audience, is here tonight. There was a report given, and if you give me just half a second, unless somebody's quicker at it, I can grab it. I'm going to ask, Caitlin, can you look it up while I continue to move forward just in the?
Yeah. I think the next ones are me, but.
Yeah. So the, right, so the Franklin Tech is the report that I saw. I'm not sure if I saw Gilmaneugh now that I look at it.
I didn't see Gilmaneugh, but I did see Franklin Tech.
I missed Gilmaneugh. Okay. Yeah. It looks like something came up, so Gilmaneugh wasn't reported on.
Okay. Can you, would you mind just reading it, just because you have it up on the screen?
Yeah. Nope. That's fine. So the, for the Franklin County Tech School, here are some highlights. We.
I'm sorry. So we're just going to table the Gilmaneugh report, or we're going to skip the Gilmaneugh report because there isn't one, just so we're clear where we are in the agenda. Sorry.
Okay. So we heard from Aiden Bailey and Lily, is it Gwir?
Jagir.
Jagir. Thank you. About the experience at the FFA state conference. Both of the students were from Irving. Aiden is now the vice president of the state FFA, and Lily placed first in the Creed competition. Exciting for both of them. FCTS students overall did really well, and some of them will be going to the national convention. The aviation hangar is up and is, work is being completed. It is estimated to have a certificate of occupancy for July 15th. The Vet Science Building is very close to completion. It is expected to have students in the space by May. There are 178 confirmed eighth graders that have committed to Franklin County Tech School. This will be the largest class in a very long time. The new lifts are installed in the auto tech shop. 14 students are taking their C A N tests in the health tech program. The auto body and collision shop are doing repair work for the town of Colrain. The Vet Science Shop was taking veterinarian assistance exams and doing a rabies clinic. And there were a number of students who submitted their sculpture work in the art space exhibit. And we were the only public school represented, so.
And so I just want to add one more quick thing about the state FFA. There is, they represent the entire state of Massachusetts, and this year, there are two students from Western Mass on the board. So the vice president and the treasurer are from Franklin County Tech. That's the first time in 16 years that Western Mass has been represented on the state board for, FFA is Future Farmers of America organization. So that's really great, that two of the five are represented from Western Mass and Franklin, Franklin County Tech specifically. So that's really exciting that, you know, the tech school is really making its mark and representing Western Mass. So that's, you know, it's very exciting for, for those students, but for the school and for this area as a whole. Thank you, Caitlin. All right. So we will go on to the Collaborative for Educational Services report.
The last time they had their meeting was when we had our meeting, so I was not able to attend both at the same time.
Okay. Regionalization update. I did receive an email looking for, for representation from Irving to be on the, the five town, let me just grab it. Six, sorry, six town, from Alan Genovese, and I may be saying his name incorrectly. Okay. Thank you. So he was apologizing for, apologizing first off that he had not included Irving, but is looking for Irving to become a non-voting member on that board. He did thank representatives who did attend in the past for speaking out, asking great questions, being very committed to the process. So he is looking for a representative for Irving to be on that board. So we will be looking to.
One or two people.
You know what? He didn't specifically say. So we will have to get a little bit of clarification. He's just looking for a representation. I don't know if that's one or two. So we will clarify and get back, and, and that would be good to have our voice on that committee. Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Oh, sorry. Nope. Planning Committee, Capital Planning Committee update. We have not met as a committee. I know there is, and feel, feel free to jump in if, if I'm missing anything. We are looking to move forward with the very first steps of the roof slash HVAC system repair, and that will include a $50,000 investment to get that boss rolling. I know that our town administrator, Brian Smith, has reached out to FERCOG for some support and advice, and so he's working with FERCOG. Caitlin, do you know any, is there any further information on that?
No.
Okay. And, and so we will be moving forward on that project. It will be a very big project, it will be a costly project, so it's not something that's going to be done quickly. Is there anything else? Anybody else want to add anything? Okay. All right. Sorry. So now we're up to Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Do you want me to come up to that line?
Yeah. Your table's not, yes. I guess so. That makes most sense.
All right. So I am here tonight to share some updates about Student Opportunity Act, so.
Who are you, please?
Oh, Lindsay Rodriguez. Sorry. So I am excited because we have an opportunity for the social emotional needs in Irving. We also have another opportunity for another school in our district. But Irving is one of the two schools that has the opportunity to get some grant funding to support this supported learning classroom that's coming back to Irving. So it is a program that is called BRIGHT. It stands for Bridging Resilient Youth and Transition. And Elizabeth Disorder will be the teacher in that room next year, so it's all exciting things happening, especially money coming in, Caitlin. So we wanted to just talk about what Bridging Resilient Youth and Transition is, and I brought Zamora Teva to talk to us about that from the BRIGHT program. And then also, really, the goal of tonight is to just have, you have in your email, but I also brought printed copies for you, the memorandum agreement for moving forward with them. Before Zamora talks about what BRIGHT is, really, the next step would be to meet with the BRIGHT team. They would come, they're coming to Irving, they're meeting with Elizabeth, myself, and probably school psychologists, anybody else who needs to be in that meeting, to talk about what are the different interventions that we have for social emotional needs specifically to Irving? And how we're going to, what we need in order to support that work further. So I'll let Zamora talk about BRIGHT.
Can you?
Yes.
But before that?
Yes.
I just wanted to ask a question, and forgive me if it's written in here somewhere. Where did this come from? Like, how do we suddenly know this, this group?
So in my previous positions, I worked in a school that also had a BRIGHT program. I contacted them to see what opportunities we could have. Elizabeth and I attended the BRIGHT Symposium and got more information about BRIGHT, and then they shared this great grant opportunity with us.
And was this available, like, last fall, or is this something new that just is becoming available?
I think the grant is just.
Be brand new, right?
Yeah. Yep. So we can, it would be starting backdated as of March 1st, so that the time that Elizabeth spent with me at the Symposium would be financially supported, but also moving forward would be as well. So, do you want copies of this, or do you have it? Okay.
Hi. I'm Zamora Teva with BRIGHT.
And I'm just going to ask you just to speak up.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Because people at home have a tough time hearing.
No problem.
And that's not a microphone that makes it loud in here, it's a microphone that goes to the home.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
Awesome. So, like Lindsay said, we've been in communication around thinking about how BRIGHT could support Irving Elementary. I'll talk a little bit about the seed funding opportunity and sort of how that came about. It is a new grant. So BRIGHT was awarded funding through the Massachusetts Legislature for us to be able to basically pass through funding to schools to seed fund BRIGHT interventions at 25 schools across the Commonwealth. And the goal is really to be able to do that in every county and across, like, the whole, whole state. Currently, we work with 250 schools that have replicated this BRIGHT model, and I'll talk more about the model in a minute. 180 of those schools are in Massachusetts. BRIGHT has been around since 2004. It's about 20 years old. The model started out in Brookline. It's really around supporting students going through significant mental health crises, supporting them in reintegrating back into the learning community, being able to, you know, be students and access learning. So it developed in a high school. We have since started working in elementary and across the whole spectrum. So it looks a little bit different in elementary schools, and the focus, like Lindsay said, is on having a supported classroom space. So the space is really important. It's designed to help students regulate so that they can bring their brains and their bodies back online to be able to access learning and instruction. And the population of students that we're talking about is really the students who are in most need of mental health supports. That can look like a range of things, often in elementary, you know, it's like students who present with persistent challenges around regulation. And when we help a school implement BRIGHT, we work, like Lindsay said, with a team sort of across the whole school, so it would include, like, guidance, adjustment, leadership, really, any, can also involve teachers. Anyone who would be referring students into BRIGHT, discussing referrals, and supporting those students. So I'll talk a little about, a little bit about the services that BRIGHT includes. So the core is academic support, direct clinical support, care coordination, and family support. So it's really a wraparound intensive supports for these students. It's transitional, so it is for students with and without disabilities, but it's not a special ed program specifically. Oftentimes, that can mean students might be able to access BRIGHT sooner than they would be able to access an IEP service. It can also be a step into an IEP, but it is a short-term intervention, so it's designed to be part of an ecosystem of different supports. What else? What else? What am I missing? What questions do you all have?
I can just start with one question.
Yeah.
Everything I have read or investigated so far, and we haven't had very much time to do any examination of stuff, but the question I have is, we have, we have implemented a variety of individual staff, this person, that skill, this person, that task. And I'm trying to figure out, get my head wrapped around, what's the total picture look like?
Yeah.
For an integrated image of, of, you know, clinical services within the school.
Yeah. That's a great question. So a huge part of it is the collaboration piece and the ability to be able to get all the adults on the same page, so that we're all supporting students in an integrated way. And so that's where a lot of the team conversations come in. So the, part of the process of developing BRIGHT and planning for BRIGHT is articulating what the entry criteria would be for students coming in, and what that looks like in terms of the priority populations that BRIGHT would serve. And so the folks who are referring, that could be like an SST team, it could be a team that already exists in the school and is already looking at students who are struggling, and considering different interventions for them. And so that's where BRIGHT can come in, sort of using the existing collaboration that already exists in the school and building on it. One of the ways that we support schools is through monthly and more frequent technical assistance meetings. So we meet with the team of folks who are involved in and adjacent to the BRIGHT intervention to really support them. We have a ton of tools and materials that we, that already exist, so we don't want anyone to have to reinvent the wheel. And so that is part of working with BRIGHT, is being able to have access to that whole resource bank. And there's, yeah, go ahead.
I think the other thing, Mark, is that the meetings that we would have in the beginning of the, of May, those are, there are two meetings that we spend, I think, an hour and a half with the BRIGHT team, kind of thinking about that big picture that you're talking about. So that hasn't happened yet, and so.
You're doing a great job not knowing anything about Irving, or what I've told you about Irving. And so that will really be the mapping that happens, and what do we need to support that program? And that would be in the beginning of May.
So you'd be, think about this coming in as a way of pulling together the existing services we have.
Yes.
I mean, I know we have some positions budgeted that haven't been filled, and I'm betting, I would bet that entire salary that they're not going to get filled next year either from talking.
I'm going to be hopeful that they're going to be filled because the mental health professionals are definitely needed.
But I've done my research, and I'm, you know, and, you know, so it would be pulling together what we've got in ways of these different positions that have been created within this package.
Right. And then we would have access to, I mean, we're going to talk more about this in those planning meetings, but professional development for mostly Elizabeth, but anyone else attached to the BRIGHT room. And then also, I think we can put supplies and materials and other things that we identify as a need to really have this program come back and be successful.
You keep saying come back. What was here before that this is?
I think it was called the.
LSC.
LSC. Thank you.
And we lost that because?
The teacher retired.
How long ago was that? Was that?
I think it was before.
A few years ago?
Yeah. It was before me, so more than two years ago.
Okay. So two or three years ago?
Yep.
And so we, we keep hearing Elizabeth's name mentioned. So Elizabeth is currently on staff, that will be, she will transition to, into what I'm assuming is the academic coordinator?
Yes. Yeah. It's, so she would be the teacher. That is really specific to, I think, middle school. It's more secondary focused at that. Yeah. With the academic coordinator, but that would be the translation, yeah, in the elementary world.
Would that be considered the, like, center contract manager, or is that you, Lindsay?
In the MOA.
Well, just in gen, in general, it was saying that the responsibilities of the.
Brookline Center Contract Manager, and then it listed out, like, attending the meetings, doing this, doing that.
Yes. So that and the hope, Mark didn't jinx us, the hope that we're going to have an adjustment counselor that can work in cohesion. And I think that is some of the stuff we have to work on, this plan of who's doing what and what is that piece? Because that's really what BRIGHT comes in, to support us in mapping all of that. How, what are the processes? What are the procedures you have in place, and how do we continue to make them more efficient and better?
So other than the one staff member that we have currently, we don't have the other people that are making up? We don't have the adjustment.
Well, we have a BCBA on staff, so I think, but part, I can't answer that tonight, because part of that work is to look at what we have in the building and talk about how that supports BRIGHT.
So will we, will this program work with the current staff we have?
So there is a, it is a pretty typical structure, especially for a smaller school.
So, there is a, it is a pretty typical structure, especially for a smaller school, where it could be like a full-time academic coordinator or a program assistant is usually what we call it at the elementary level. And then the clinical part can be supported by existing staff. But again, like Lindsay said, we would be getting into all of that during the planning process itself.
Right. So, they like, they map out all of the different supports that we have on the academic side to understand the academic side, and then all of the different supports we have for the social emotional side and really look at the whole picture of what we, what we have here. So, included in that would be this position we are working to get filled.
Okay.
And I'm still hopeful that that.
But my concern is that there is the needs and then there's the actual bodies of staff in the building, right? We hope to hire, we hope to hire, we hope to hire. The needs are there. Are you able to structure a program with the actual bodies that we have in the building? Because we can't guarantee that we will hire X, Y, and Z.
Again, the mapping is gonna happen, so I don't wanna fully, fully answer you now. However, the reason the two schools that we selected out of the four is because they had people on staff that we could think about how to repurpose and support within the school.
So, if we...
So, that's why we picked those two schools.
So, if we move to the next step?
Yep.
And?
The mapping is free for every school in Massachusetts.
Right. When you move to the next step, you know, if it turns out we, we don't have enough people and we need another person or what have you, is that in, in a grant or in available funds from outside? Or is that gonna have to be repurposing of somebody within the staff?
So, I think that piece, if that were to happen, I think our goal of why we picked Irving as one of the schools is because we have staff in existence that our hope would be that we wouldn't need to. Now, if, I don't know, we haven't done the mapping yet because we wanted to come to you first to tell you about the, the grant opportunity, but if we did the mapping, then my understanding is that person, if there was a person who was needed, would be covered for the first year. And then it could be rolled out. But that is all, I'm just being clear, that is all ifs, because we haven't done the mapping because we wanted to come to you first.
I have one other question. And that is, in all of our talking about the positions and supports and so forth, I don't really have a sense of what the scale of the problem is. I know the problem exists. You know, I talked to enough different people. I've been around the farm quite a few times and a lot of situations. So, you know, I know the problem exists, but the question is, to what scale? You know, how many kids are we talking about? Are we talking about a third of the population here? Are we talking about two or three? I'm also aware, well, that's enough of a start right there at that. I have another question that goes along with that, but.
So, in the Student Opportunity Act, we talked about adopting a screener that's supporting the SEL needs and really being able to identify the number of what are we talking about percentage-wise that really need support? So, that, we are working on rolling out in Irving. I believe that the teachers have done the screening part, so I'm happy to get you data for the next meeting on what, what we have, but I'll need some time because we just started rolling that out after.
It'd be very important to know, you know, level three, level two, you know, the different levels of, of need that we're talking about here.
And some of those procedures would be in the mapping process too. But yes.
And I have one other question. Yeah, we have a community here. These kids spend just a day, you know, what, six hours? Is it five and a half, six hours in school? And they're out there the rest of the time. We have other resources in this town that are available to kids. You know, we have an officer who likes to go walking and meeting people and, and does. You know, we have a co-responder who rides this town and the surrounding towns, in fact, some of the other towns. You know, there are resources that people in the senior center are quite aware of and, you know, they know, they know the numbers and people to call. You know, we have a comfort dog that goes to crises, you know, and, and a lot of times incidents in school for vulnerable kids are triggered by events that happened on the weekend. You know, how much effort can we guarantee is gonna get put into connecting outside? You know, checking with a library to find out are there kids that hide there?
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's the care coordination part, if you wanna.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. So, that's what we talk about as care coordination. So, that's one of the, the four key services that Bright works to provide. So, that would really, really be looking at the supports that exist in the community, tying them together, and then also making sure that families have that information. Really, the care coordination is getting, like figuring out who is on this child support team, what resources are they not connected with yet, and referring them to those resources and sort of building those bridges and having like a hub where those conversations are happening.
Do you wanna ask your second point before I, I ask him?
Essentially, scale, meaning connection to outside. I mean, those are the key, key things that are on my mind. The only other thing is, when we make this next step, you know, if there are questions that are gonna come up, I mean, can we say, oops, we can't do this at the next meeting? You know, I feel like we got this information within a week. And some of this information I got today.
Yeah.
And now, even though, even though I'm retired and I was not going to work today, I still was not able to read up on the information that came out just today. So, I have a very hard time, not from the personal side of warning the services, but from the side of the school committee making decisions that are responsible.
Yep.
Real hard time making the decision under the gun like this.
And we met with, Paul is the director, right? So, we met with Paul, the director, on Thursday last week. So, this all is like happening very fast with your meeting today.
But you went to symposiums back in March, so.
So, that was back in March. That got, we had to meet with the director in order to get the MOA started.
Right. But I'm wondering why back in March we didn't start hearing about this? If you went to the symposiums about it, that would have been helpful to know a little bit more about it so that at our April meeting, we could have been a little bit better informed about it.
Just to clarify, this seed funding, so the seed funding opportunity that got started right around March, so it's all like very new to Bright as well.
So, let's stay on that for a minute.
We talked about the seed funding at the Symposium. I stayed after, talked to Zamora and said, would we be eligible?
Okay. Hang tight for one second. So, let's talk about the money for a minute.
The director, to talk to the director of Bright to kind of get that ball rolling of moving forward. We met with the director and now we need to meet with you. So, here we are.
Okay. So, how much is this grant for?
So, it depends on the needs of the school. So, that's what we would determine during the planning process. So, we're working with each of the schools that are, that we're gonna seed fund to figure out it's tailored to their specific needs.
So, and that's not gonna happen until May?
Yes.
Okay.
You'll bring the results to the May meeting.
We have, we have those meeting, that meeting is May 8th, I believe, and May 14th are the, off the top of my head.
Okay. So, for how long is this grant for?
So, it's for two years. So, it would run through the 25, 26 school years.
Two years?
With the second year, depending on, so during the second year, the district might pick up some portion of costs depending on how much sort of like initially we seed fund, with the idea being, you know, to look towards long-term sustainability after the seed funding runs out. But it's for two years.
So, in May, when you determine the needs of the school, you will put a dollar amount to those needs and that's what we are guaranteed to receive?
Yeah. Yep. So, there's a budgeting piece that, that goes into it.
So, 100% of the program will be funded?
Yes.
Yes. That's why this is amazing.
Yeah.
And at least for year one, and in year two, there's some, some percentage reduction off of 100%, but you don't know what it is?
Not specifically yet. It would depend on sort of the overall cost. So, for some schools, if we're supporting two full-time staff people salaries, then we would expect the district to pick up a portion of that cost.
And so, what, so 100% of what? 100% of the staff member we currently have plus a future staff member that we're hoping to hire as a?
100% of whatever in that mapping process, which we haven't done yet, 100% of whatever comes out of that. So, let's say professional development is gonna be one thing, right? So, access for Elizabeth and whoever this adjustment counselor is slash the BCBA to the professional development that Bright offers. That would be the weekly meetings with someone that would be supporting kind of the work that's happening on the ground, kind of like a consultant. Then, supplies and materials, I guarantee there's gonna be things that Bright recommends as having in a Bright classroom. They'll cover those. And those are gonna be upfront to start the program. Some other examples, which I don't know that we need this, but I, like some other examples the director said was if you need like an extra space built for like a mini office within a classroom, because Bright likes to have like a private clinical space and a classroom. So, they would cover that if we needed that. I don't, we haven't done the mapping, so I don't know that yet.
So, who is covering the cost of the actual Irving personnel?
Well, that's already in the budget.
Well, no, that person's in the budget as a classroom teacher. They're no longer gonna be in that role, so somebody's gotta backfill.
The learning, the, remind me the acronym?
It used to be the Learning Support Center.
The Learning Support Center, my understanding is in the, like to bring that back, was in the budget as a teacher. There needs to be a teacher in there.
We don't have, I don't believe that was in the list of staff that you gave us when we were doing the budget and adding up everyone's salary.
It's changed a bit depending on who we've been able to fill those positions.
With, whether it's a BCBA, you know, the psychologist, it's been kind of a, you know, moving, moving set of mental health.
Right. But I'm talking about the fact that we are taking, we are transitioning a staff member from a full-time teaching position to now some other position within the Bright system, right? So, somebody has gotta be that full-time teacher next year.
There would need to be that person within that space, like there would need to be a certified teacher within that space.
Within which space?
In that space, we were only told that an adjustment counselor was needed, and that's why we had added that and made sure that was available. So, when we asked the question of what is it going to take to make this program happen? What is it going to take to have that functionality and that support of our staff? We were told that it was an adjustment counselor. So, that's what that adjustment counselor position is. That's budgeted for.
And I think that that could potentially work. However, knowing what I know about Bright, that would, that would bring some more process and procedure and supports to kids to have it coordinated and address the, how are we gonna make sure all of that care coordination is happening?
But we're still got, it sounds to me like we have a physician that's empty that's not funded.
We have a classroom that needs a teacher, because that teacher is now being transitioned into a different role. So, who is teaching that class now?
I don't have all the assignments, so I can't see to that.
No, no. I'm not asking for a person's name. I'm saying there isn't a person in the budget for that, to fill that space.
My understanding, based on what you had previously talked about, is that you wanted a person in that space and that is what this is. So, I'm happy to go back and work with Caitlin to see and make sure, but my understanding is that there was going to be a person that could be in that space.
I don't know that that was in this year's, this next year's budget.
We've asked several times, and that's not what we were, that's not what was budgeted.
Okay. So, if there, if there is a need for that, when we go through the mapping process, I think that that could be something that is, could be supported by Bright.
So, do you understand how difficult it is though for us to sign off on a memorandum of understanding when you're answering in could, maybe, possibly?
I understand, but I, we couldn't move forward with the mapping process without bringing this to you.
Right. I understand that.
So, I can't answer all of those questions because we haven't gone through the process and we can't go through the process without coming to you.
But you understand that we can't, we, it's gonna be very difficult for us to agree to something that we actually don't know the parameters of.
Okay. So, do you want us to go through the mapping process, which is free for every school in Massachusetts?
And then bring us more information?
And then bring us human information.
Yes, because we're not even sure what the need is, right? You said you weren't sure what the need was.
But I, but what was told to me is that we needed to come to you first before we go through that mapping process.
I'm not saying that that was wrong information. I'm just saying that you have to understand from our perspective, you're asking for us to agree to something that we don't have all the information to agree to.
Okay. So, you want us to go back, do the mapping process and come back and share what we learned from that mapping process? And then have also this question with the budget?
Yeah. And I think how to sustain it, right? So, if we have it for one year and this is great and it's all going well, what is that actually going to look like when possible percentages on our part? But then after that, there might not be anything, right? So, come that third year.
Right.
To, if this is a great program and it's super successful and we wanna be able to support it, we need to know that financial backing to be able to support it. So, really looking at that as this whole picture of yes, this is great in the moment, but we're gonna continue to move on, right? And there're gonna be needs each and every year, and this school needs to be supported. I think there's been some of this, like works for a couple of years and then it falls off, and then works try to come up with something new and then it falls off. And that's kind of what we've seen as a pattern for many years, not, you know, just right now. And so, I think that is a concern of mine of like, yes, this sounds great and, there's a big and there with all these kind of questions. And I think part of that data of coming back and presenting with the mapping would be, you know, currently there has to be some needs, right? Otherwise, you wouldn't be coming to us. But what does that look like? So, currently, if we were to implement this tomorrow, who were, how many students out of, out of our, you know, total enrollment? And then from there, these current students are already identified. Now, we're doing this screener. That's gonna give us even more information, which is great, right? So, from there, how many more students have we identified that could really use and benefit from these services? And then be able to look at what percentage of our students as a whole do those two populations represent, right? So, then when we look at the funding, how does that break down? And what does that funding look like to once again be able to support the school? So, really just like that bigger picture of kind of what it looks like, what that makeup is, I think would be really helpful to be able to make that decision. And then how, there were some, I won't get into that, but just even how, I like completely lost. If I think of it, I can come back to it. But yeah, I think that would be really helpful.
And I would like to add a third bullet point to that, which is to better...
Are you putting all this in the notes, Caitlin?
Katie is.
To better flesh out what the roles would be. So, again, we have a current staff member that potentially is gonna be transitioning into that role.
Right. And that would be, yes.
What is that role gonna be called and what is that kind of job description going to be? Because we don't have that position right now. So, job description would need to be developed, and that would be something that we would have to agree on. Union would be involved. It's a much bigger than just plunking somebody in there.
Of course, yeah. And we have sample job descriptions and sample interview questions and things like that that can be adapted however you want. And also, just to speak to the, your point before, part of Bright implementation would be tracking the data of students who are entering, all of that. Okay, great.
And that was, I was gonna like refer to that, but I was like, I've already, you know, stated a lot, but I, I loved how that was broken down into that data and that reporting. And I would hope that it would be shared with school committee as well, because I think that would be really beneficial to see how it is supporting students, you know, and like what kind of referrals are being made and, and what does that look like? And stuff would just be really interesting to see.
Yeah. So, folks would be tracking that through, through the portal.
And then, and then finally, just to go back for the, to the personnel for just a minute, not only that person's job description, but then how much of the time of hopefully this other mental health provider or even the BCBA, which we currently have, how much of their time is going to be kind of devoted to this versus one-off things that they may need to be dealing with in the school, right? So, I wanna make sure that we are not taxing these people and putting them over here when really we also need them to be, you know, supporting our general population that does have things pop up. So, a better kind of description of what that's gonna look like day-to-day.
Yeah. Absolutely.
I wanna add one thing. Sorry.
This is getting longer. That's fine.
Just, we get, with our principal's report, we get a, an enrollment and grade and so forth layout. If, I had asked for a projection for next year, back before vacation, for what was expected. So, it would seem to me that in addition to each of these... So it would seem to me that in addition to each of these grades, we're going to also want that room and, you know, what it might be serving.
But I think the other thing to know about this room is that students are moving between their classroom, their homeroom, homeroom and this other classroom. And I think, yeah, it's not, so, and I think we could share how many students are accessing the program, but we wouldn't share grades because we're in such a small school.
No, no, to me it would be a bracketed number, you know, like, you know. And when I asked...
And I think, oh, sorry. I think that number could fluctuate too, because the idea of Bright is, is kids are getting support when they need it, and if they don't need it anymore, we're not, we're going to find other students that need it, because there is definitely a need.
Is there a capacity?
I think that's what we're going to talk about in the mapping, right?
Sorry, sorry.
Sorry.
Just when we do this, what I had asked for to go with where we get, where we get our enrollment numbers and so on, that when we did it, we get the, the grade, the classroom, how many teachers are in there? How many aides are assigned there and so forth? I wanted that layout as part of understanding what our needs are in the school, which would hopefully answer the question of, you know, where are we going to get additional staff or a staff, or where is a staff going to slide? And so when we get a projection for next year, and maybe as part of that report you, next month, it would be, you know, how many kids are in a grade? How many, you know, teachers? How many paras, you know, are there floaters that are going to be moving in and out of this program even from other rooms and so on? So a more complete layout of what the staff of the school is going to be. That's all I have. I'm not going to ask any more questions.
Are they okay without voting? Are we going to report without voting?
Appreciate it, it sounds like a good program.
Yes, it's exciting.
So we'll add you to the agenda then for my, for May?
I haven't looked at your date, so I need to double check.
Third Tuesday, whatever that is.
Okay. I will double check my calendar.
Or, or then June.
I made it tonight, and it's my kid's birthday, so.
Oh, no.
Well, happy birthday to your child. Happy birthday. All right.
Sorry, real quick, I said I might have more questions and it came back. Can I, can I ask a couple more things?
Um, hang on one second, let me just see where we're at.
Sure.
So do we have to vote or do anything on that?
No, we just had a discussion.
So we're saying we're requesting the information. Lindsay, Katie, you and I, we all can work together on those questions and get them to you if that's okay?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so nothing else on that, we can move on.
Okay, so, so I'm going to, you know, entertain you coming up, but I do want to say that we do have other business that we have to keep moving forward with. So go ahead and ask your questions, we'll answer them if we can, but then we do have to keep moving.
Sure, I appreciate you entertaining it, because I think a lot of people in the community are here because they have concerns about the threat. So I appreciate you continuing to entertain the, the conversation. So first you had said, I should set up a meeting with the superintendent to see if I can get any other information. I'll just ask ahead of time, so no other parents reach out. Will we learn anything in private if we set up a meeting with you? Or is everything you're saying in public, are we going to learn anything new?
I won't know until you ask the question whether I can answer it based on personnel confidentiality needs.
Okay, so the same questions I've already asked, so I'm going to take that as most likely a no. So just for parents, what are the first steps we should do according to whatever protocol you guys have in place? Should we contact the school? Should we contact the police? What, what should we do?
It depends on what it is you want to do.
What do you mean?
Well, like what should you do as far as what? What, what do you want as your outcome? And then I'll tell you who to talk to. I'm not sure what you are looking for.
Your child comes and tells you they were threatened in a very serious way.
What I'm asking you is, is this a question you have for law enforcement? Then I would defer you to the law enforcement agent, you know, the police department.
Should we go to law enforcement or should we go to the school?
Yeah, it's, my kid comes home from school and says, hey, someone threatened me very seriously today.
I believe they called the school.
I would say, if you have a meeting with the superintendent, go to that meeting and, and get the answers that you can get from there. If it's, again, if it's as our chief mentioned, if it's something that's specific to law enforcement, then I would suggest that you, that you speak with the police department to get answers from the law, from that side of things.
If you're saying a serious threat, you're saying a threat of physical harm.
Or emotional.
Well, that's where we're trying to parse this law enforcement thing. And, but I would say both personally, as a former, as, as, I mean...
Sure, I wasn't trying to be cagey, I'm just trying to give you the best...
But if it's a question, if it's a question, go to both.
Sure, absolutely.
Your superintendent should know, your law enforcement should know.
They will answer as much as they can answer for you.
Yeah, and partially I'm...
If somebody doesn't belong there, they'll step back.
Yeah, and, and I would just...
Hang on, we can't have people... Elizabeth, we can't have you yelling from the, from the audience, because people can't, I know, and I'm going to shut everybody down, I'm going to say the same thing, you were just the last one. We can't have everybody yelling from the audience, because people at home can't hear. We have to make sure that everybody is able to hear, and you need to be recognized. So if you have something you want to say, please come up to the mic. I'll try and recognize you if that's at all possible. But if we could just not, you know, shout from the audience, I know it's hard, but please try and remember that.
Sorry, just sorry to that.
No, that's, I mean, you're miked, but, yeah, so, believe me, I'm not, I'm not trying to be evasive. I'm, I'm just trying to direct you to the right place, but Mark's correct. If, if there's a concern, reach out to both departments.
Okay. Is, someone asked me to ask this question. Where is this protocol that keeps getting referred to? We understand this is new for Irving, but it doesn't negate the fact that it could happen anywhere at any time at any school. Why isn't there a policy or protocol in the handbook for students and parents related to this situation?
So why isn't there a policy in our handbook? Is that what you're asking, or a procedure in our handbook?
Yeah, or where is it?
Okay, I honestly, at this site, I couldn't tell you. I can certainly look into that and get back to people. And, and you're going to meet with the superintendent, so you might get your answer through that quicker.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say also the policies are all on the school website.
Yep, under the school committee.
Yes, under school committee. You then go from school committee to, there's a place where it says policy. I'm constantly looking them up to double check on things.
Okay.
But certainly reach out if, if you can't find it.
I got two more questions.
So, hold on, only because I want to somewhat answer you. I was trying to control F and find, real quick. So it looks like, and I haven't had a second to like read it currently, but it looks like there is a, in the student handbook, the student school handbook, so not school committee policies, school handbook. There is a bullying prevention and intervention policy in there. Like I said, I have not like gone through it, but it does say like each team will, and it has some bullet points, and it goes over some of the procedures and guidelines and processes. So I think that would be a great start to...
That's where I went last year when my kid was punched in the face, and there's nothing specific in there. Because I, I brought up at the time, like we should have some more specifics for more egregious actions. And at the time I was referred to go to some other student committee or council, which...
School council.
Right.
Which is the one that creates this handbook with the principal. So essentially what we have always been told, because we've had people come to us first, is that we are being directed to let families know that they need to talk to the principal and talk to the superintendent, and then if that gets you nowhere, then to come to us, I guess. That's the only, that's the only process that is kind of written out.
Then I'm coming back, because last year there was no principal, and nobody knew who was in charge of the student council. So I guess, who, school council, thank you. Who's in charge of the school council that we can reach out to now to drive change in policy? Or student handbook?
And I think that would be a question for the superintendent.
Oh, wait, let us slip, no, let's see, do you want to answer that?
So there's nobody in charge of the council?
School council.
Thank you.
The principal is in charge of the school council.
Okay. Okay, I'll just ask my last two questions, and we can circle back to this if there's more people who want to talk.
I was going to say...
Sure.
That one of the things that I personally been bringing out is going through policies and looking at policies and looking for ways, things that need updating. And there's no reason, as far as I can tell, that I can't reach into the bullying prevention policy and put it on the agenda for a policy meeting. And so that it can be discussed and amended to answer these questions. And if I, you know, if I'm going to put that out, I wouldn't be, I'd be, it would be next meeting, next policy meeting, next school committee meeting. We could put it on the agenda and we can look at more and say, hey, can we put a line in it that says this?
Sure, no, I appreciate that, thank you for bringing that up. When the investigation is complete, will any information be shared with the general public? I understand that there's a lot of things that can't be shared, but will anything be shared about changes here that need to be made?
I, we, I don't think we could answer that right now.
Okay.
We don't know.
I'll probably ask that again later. And the last one is, in the letter to the parents today, and you speaking earlier, one of the things we said was, the main goal is to ensure the safety of the children. How are you ensuring the safety of the children?
So I know that an investigation was done by the police department. They have concluded that, and Rob, I don't want to speak for you, so by any means, by all means, jump in if I'm misunderstanding, misspeaking, that they have concluded that the, that the school is safe. And so I know that the police department is working closely with the superintendent, and that's why they wanted to put that message out to try and make sure everyone heard the same message, that the school is, is safe at this point.
Okay, because it's one of these things where you don't really think about it. You see it, you hear about it, but you never really think until it's actually a little closer, and you feel the burn of it, and then you think, how are we actually safe? We have someone who, you know, the doors are locked, that's about it. You know, so I started thinking, how do we make sure our kids are actually safe? And I, I couldn't answer that. And I couldn't answer that for any school, right? I know we have drills and things like that, and I, I don't mean to come at you in an aggressive way. I just recognize it's serious, and I don't feel parents right now have a good forum to bring this discussion up right now. And they just conveniently had this meeting tonight. So I, I wanted to have more discussion on it, to hear what we could, to let at least parents talk about their concerns a little bit more. And I know you have your agenda to stick to, and I, again, appreciate letting me talk, but it's important to continue to let the parents connect to the school emotionally, and this is an emotional time.
Sure, and so I also just want to say that we would never fully explain to you all of the ways that we keep our school safe, right? Because that could work against us then.
Yep, I get that.
But what I can say to you is the people charged with keeping the school safe, the superintendent, the, the, the police department, have deemed it safe. I have to trust those people, right? They don't, they don't tell me everything either, right?
Sure.
Because there are things that you just wouldn't have made out to the public. But I have been connected with them, and they have assured me of that. So that is why it was important for a message to go out to all the parents, to try and assure them as well that, you know, steps were taken, and that was, that was the result, was that it was, you know, the police have, have assured us that the school is safe.
Okay. And I guess the last thing is, do we know who, okay, principal's in charge of the school council, got you.
And I don't know, the one that, the version I'm looking at is, is considered draft that was submitted to us in February, and I know that we were told that changes were made to update the school handbook, but we weren't given the before and after of knowing what was added and what wasn't. So in front of me with the draft, I am seeing like procedures and guidelines and potential like reporting requirements, investigation procedures, non-classroom supervision times, consequences of the findings, the appropriate range of consequences, subject due, process where appropriate as follows. So it is broken down in that handbook, but I, I don't know if that's in the ver, like I don't have the older one from this. So we have requested kind of seeing what those differences are, and then once this is all set, then it would get released. I don't know if the draft can be released beforehand.
Well, there is something in place right now.
Right, I just don't know if this same, like, information, which is, I, I think is what you're looking for, is in that other one or not.
So, so I would, I would ask that you go back and, and read it, and if it's still not what you're thinking it should be, then connect with the school, work through the school council, that's the, that's the chain of how the handbook gets changed. But Mark is saying we also have some policies, and that gets done through the policy committee. So that's also two separate things, but both of which you can become involved with.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just add something about school council?
One second, I just want to make sure that, because Rob stood up, I just want to make sure...
You can go first.
Okay.
So school council is run by the principal, and then for every faculty that's on the school council, there's also a community member, a parent. So there's two parents, Callie, Jessica, I'm going to butcher her last name. That's okay, thank you. Myself, Samantha Batinsky, and the principal. And so we meet twice a month, once a month through the year, and we talk about policies. The old student handbook with all those policies is pretty ancient. And we worked really hard all year to revamp it. And so something that was, in the very beginning, I think, was maybe 10 pages, is now like 50. It's, we're waiting for that to get voted through. So the original version is on our website right now, so you could print it from there.
Right, so we were just looking for like red line differences, so that way...
It's entirely different. So I would, if you want to look at the old handbook and print it out, like, maybe you could see with the headings. I don't know, you're going to find that this one's just much more, it's just way more detailed and it includes so much more. So I think if you just were to print it out, the old one, and look at the two, you'd be able to see that, you'd notice the differences. I don't, it wasn't, it was like completely rewritten. It wasn't something where we embellished the old one, it was completely rewritten. Okay, so there's that, I think that was all, like, school, school council, yeah. And so then, you know, that's, oh, and there's links in this new student handbook that go directly to the school committee policy, because all of the school committee's policies are how we determine, like, they're all very connected. So when you go to the student handbook and it says, you know, I don't know, it's like life-threatening allergies, there's a procedure to follow, that's, and then there's a link there that you can click on it, and it'll pull you right up to the school committees, what they have to say about life-threatening allergies. How are we supposed to handle this? Hopefully that, does that help?
I have one more, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
So Rob Holst, obviously the Irving Police Department, and I just want to speak to a couple of the questions. Devin, to, to your point, who do you call? Nobody can go wrong by calling the police. We are not here to get involved in everybody's business. If it is not law enforcement specific, we will direct you to the appropriate people. We have no problems taking phone calls. We take phone calls all the time, and we have to redirect them to the appropriate people. I can tell you that we will take your call, we will take your call serious, and we will investigate your call, and we will make sure that we reach out to the appropriate people that need to be reached out if it's something we can't do. So I, hopefully that, that clarifies your question. I think it's important that you do call the school. I think it's, if it was a medical, it's important to call the fire department. If it's, if it's a dog-related issue, it's important to call the animal control officer. But you can't go wrong by calling the police department, and we will direct your, your call. We can also document that you did call, which is a helpful tool. I would caution people, and I'm not saying anybody in this room, but my cell phone is not the appropriate way to get ahold of me. I have said this many, many times in department meetings. Email is not the appropriate way to get ahold of me. If you need the police department, you need to contact the 24-hour dispatch number. They will reach out to the on-duty officer. They will respond to you in a timely fashion, and they will handle your issue. Leaving Rob Holst an email while I'm on vacation, or voicemail when I'm on vacation, is not the proper way to get ahold of the police department. So I just wanted to say that piece.
Thank you for clarifying that, that's a good point.
Devin, to your question about laws. Laws are very difficult for law enforcement when it's juveniles. A lot of things that happen at the school, law enforcement don't have control over. We can be part of, but I'll give you a perfect example... And I'm not saying that this has anything to do with this incident. But say, for example, somebody suspected somebody had something at the school that they shouldn't have. If law enforcement want to look into somebody's bag or locker, we need a warrant. If the school wanted to, there's policies and procedures in place that allow the school to do that. That's just an example of where it may be a law enforcement function, but we may direct that function to the school because there's less hoops to jump through, I guess. Anybody under the age of 12 cannot be criminally charged. So, if you have a five-year-old that's being bullied, or you have a seven-year-old that was hit in the face, or you can report that to us. We can document it. We're happy to go and try to mediate and talk to parents and say, how can we resolve this issue? Work with the school. This is an issue that's going on. How can we make that better? We might not be able to do anything as far as the law goes, but we could at least come alongside and try to help the situation. Again, call us, let us know, and we can direct those calls. There was one more thing, Devin, that you asked. Oh, the safety of the school. I am not gonna stand up here and say Irving is safe. I can't do that. It is the goal of the Irving Police Department to provide a safe community. We do everything in our power to make it safe. There's some things that are outside of our power that we just can't control. I can say with confidence that this specific incident, after meeting with Superintendent Cole Keen, the job that Sergeant Pecos did on the investigation, and the collaboration with local, state, and outside agencies, I believe wholeheartedly that this situation is being resolved and it is safe at this school. This situation. Something could happen tomorrow and I can't say, don't say, well, Rob said it was safe. I'm saying this situation, and to Mackenzie's point, it's still an ongoing investigation. The investigation is not stopped by any means. So, I hope that for parents, teachers, that gives some reassurance. The last piece I would just like to say is, social media, in my opinion, is vicious. I don't do social media. I would ask that if there's parents, if you have students, if you're on social media, please stop. Stop the back and forth, stop the bantering. Let's just all try to work together, resolve the issue, and let's move forward so everybody can move forward and be, and feel safe. Whether they're a victim, a suspect, or a witness, or not involved at all. Social media and the back and forth does not help the situation. So, I hope that's helpful.
Thank you.
And so, let me then clarify to Chief's point. When I said the school was safe, yes, that was a good point that was made. In this particular case, we can say that. It's true. We don't know what's going to happen in 10 minutes, right? We don't know what's gonna happen tomorrow, but.
10 minutes, you're safe because we're both here.
We'll just take you with us everywhere. All right.
I'm gonna be super quick. I just want to say that some of us, speaking of social media, found out via ClassDojo. And it said, sure, you're all aware. And we're all like, aware of what? So, maybe we should, at some point, revisit how we are finding out serious information.
Yep. Thank you.
Two-second question took place towards you, pertaining to this. How would residents of the town, parents of students who go here, who know the students involved in this, place a request to have the principal, who did not forward this information to the proper channels, in our, most of our regards, in the proper ways, ask for some sort of leave of the principal while we, while the police do their job and go forth in the investigation and get more than, you know, sides and stuff? So, how would parents come forth and say, we don't think that we should be trusting this person in the lives of our children?
So, if you would like to file a complaint, you can send that to me and then we can start the proper channels and the proper procedure for that.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Superintendent, do you want to say anything more about that?
No, I'm not commenting on anything personnel. I'm sorry, I just. I cannot comment on personnel issues.
Yep. We are, let's see where we are in the agenda. We are up to the superintendent's report.
I have created a superintendent transition planning guide. This will be an electronic compilation of many documents for incoming Superintendent Cleveland. Some of the items gathered for her are our Union 28 district strategic plan, our roadmap for continuous improvement for student support services, the Union 28 operational efficiency study that was done in partnership with the Collins Center, their findings and data collection, our district curriculum accommodation plan, our Union 28 staff handbook, which is still in draft form, our recently submitted Student Opportunity Act Plan for 2024 through '27, school improvement plans for all four Union 28 schools, school committee contacts lists, town administration contact lists, FY25 budgets, once approved, grants we receive, bargaining contracts, central office staff contracts, administrator contracts, Union 28 policy manuals and emergency information relative to school closure. All of this will make the transition smoother with Superintendent Cleveland. And I have met with her and will continue to meet with her over the next few months as we work towards a smooth transition for Union 28.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Anything else to add? Okay. All right. So, we're up to the Director of Finance and Operations.
The Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials, or MASBO, annual institute, May 15th to 17th at the Cape. I've selected the following sessions, among other ones, empowering schools to take charge of their futures, insights and innovations, facility project lessons learned. There's networking, social, workforce and hiring trends. What is the data and research telling us? Regional school district budgets and assessments. There's a general session with Inspector General Jeffrey Shapiro. Fund balances, striking the right balance, excess and deficiency submission to the DOR. Local, and then there's local area roundtables, only with local school business officials. Capital planning, effective and efficient trends in school finance and operations. And then there's some representation from Dusty that provides us with information. The FY24 budget update. So, this is the same information I had sent to you last week, but the areas that we're finding that we do have unspent money. Three of the major ones were the classroom teacher salaries, regular education, specialist teacher salaries, regular education, and specialist teacher special education. So, a lot of this is in part to, the contract that we, that Unit A is currently under wasn't settled until after that budget was created. So, it wasn't just budgeting for last year with an estimated COLA. It was also budgeting for this year. So, the estimates we had used were a 3%, 2.5%. The contract actually represents a 2%, 2.25%. So, we had money in a lot of the salary lines that will go unspent because it didn't match the estimate that we had at the time. There's also therapeutic services. Oh, so that amount for those three lines is $112,807. Therapeutic services, there's about $42,000. There was a change in the FTE necessary for the physical therapist, and then also the same Unit A contract estimates. We have a new staff member that replaced one for $29,500 lower on the step and salary schedule. The psychologist salary line, we have about $19,100. There was a change in FTE of the position during the year. The summer program, there was a reduction in need, so we have about $14,870. And the equipment lease, the only thing in this line is for the storage container. So, about $12,685. But here are the areas of anticipated over expense. Special education.
Before you want, hang on, can I just ask some, I'd like to ask some questions about that. So, when you're talking about the equipment lease, that's, if I'm on your budget, that's the equipment lease, that's under replacement of equipment, and then the next line is equipment lease?
It's just equipment lease.
Rob, I'm just trying to orient you. Am I on the right line?
Yeah, the one that says equipment lease.
Right. So, it started out at $14,500?
Yes.
Okay. So, if it's a lease... I'm just trying to understand. We encumbered only the lease for the storage unit? Storage, whatever we call that thing out there?
Yes, I believe so, but I'd have to look into it if there's other ones that are encumbered right now.
Well, that's the only one you said we were using that money for, right?
I believe so, but I would have to check in through our system to see if there's anything I'm missing.
I thought that's what you just said.
Anything that's encumbered that I might not know is encumbered yet. But so far, we've just been using it for the storage container.
I'm sorry. So, you're thinking that there's a possibility that some other amount is encumbered in there?
I'm saying I don't know. I would have to check back.
Okay, but without knowing that, though, you can, you know that there's $13,000 left over after you've encumbered?
Roughly $13,000.
Of the $14,500?
Yes.
I guess I'm wondering if those storage units are out there?
Yep.
And they were leased, so... I guess I don't understand.
It's a set amount every month, but you're saying there could be something else encumbered. If that's the case, then how do you know that there's $13,048 left?
Well, the $13,048 is what's left in our system. What I had to do for some of the things that, for some lines that we weren't able to encumber, was use a different, I used a different sheet, so they might not match up exactly. This is a closer representation of what we're expecting.
So, somewhere else, there is money that the lease company is getting for those storage units?
Not though.
They've only gotten $400 for it? Or 500?
A thousand.
No.
Oh, wait, I'm on the wrong line. No.
Well, it started out at 14.5 and you're saying there's now 13. So, that's $1,500-ish. Okay. And that's all fine, but what I'm not clear on is how, you're not sure if there's any other things encumbered in that line, but you're sure that there's $13,000 left in it. I'm not understanding how you can know that there's $13,000 if you're not sure if anything else has been encumbered for that line.
I don't know that there's anything else besides the storage container. I would have to look into encumbrances for that line. But because the encumbrance is for 363, that matches three months of our $121 rent. So, I would, I think the storage unit's been encumbered.
I think I understand.
So, areas of anticipated over expense. We have some, the special education lines. We have some encumbrances reflective of programmatic changes.
Okay. Can you go through those a little bit slower so that, one, we can find them and, two, we can ask you questions about them?
That's a collection of lines.
I'm sorry?
It's a collection of lines, several lines together.
The special education?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So, can you speak a little bit to that? What, where, where and for what was the overages?
So, that, in the email that I sent with the information, I said that we're not going to discuss that in our open meeting, but if you have questions, like, that you can ask me directly over email or call me.
I'm not asking about a specific child or anything like that. I'm asking, what, did a program change? Did we suddenly have another out-of-district placement? We need to know just that. I don't, I don't need to know what the person's name was, but we do need to know that.
We had a programmatic change.
In the sense of an out-of-district placement? Is this something that's going to be continuing on? Those are the answers that we need to have so we can continue to budget.
I don't have those answers for you right now.
Which line is that from?
It's a collection of a few lines that I'd really rather not get into. I'm gonna, we had, we went through last year with a lot of very sensitive conversations during meetings and I would really like to avoid that.
I hear you, but we are in charge of the money. And if we don't know if this is gonna be a recurring cost, if this is a cost that we need to carry over into next year, then we can't budget for it. So, again, I don't need to know the specific, if it's one child, if it's two children, who they are. But we do need to have some information so that we can keep this budget on track.
It most likely will be recurring and there may be a fluctuation in cost.
And again, is this something like its transportation line? Is this an out-of-district placement where it's a tuition? I'm not asking where. I'm just asking, what line is it? So, again, we can budget for it properly.
I would feel more comfortable responding to those questions directly to you and not during an open meeting.
You cannot do that because the entire board has to be aware of the situation. It's not just me that votes on things.
But you're not voting on anything.
But we will have to adjust our budget and that's a board decision. That's not a me decision.
The budget for next year's already been voted on and sent to the town.
Yeah, but what we do with the money that's left over at the end of this year is a decision we're gonna have to make this year.
But it also affects our next year budget. If something is increasing significantly now and that it's gonna carry over into next year, that we may or may not have budgeted for, we may or may not need to rebudget or move things around, which is a board decision. It's not an individual board member decision. So, we need these answers in order to move forward and make sure that our budget is balanced.
I don't have answers.
So, I hear your hesitation, but what I'm saying to you is, I need numbers. I need money. I don't want to know where the program is or who's in the program. I do need to know, and we all need to know, what the money is and where it's going.
So, that would be the $21,400.
Say it again.
$21,400.
And again?
That's, that's, that's over.
That we are over.
We are over.
In multiple lines?
Yes.
A total of $21,000?
Yes. Special education contracted services, we're about $12,000 over. There was an increase in need for contracting evaluations during times that mental health professional positions went unfilled. And replacement of equipment, $7,100 for new cafeteria and custodial equipment. The over and under lines add up to approximately $188,000 that we can anticipate but not guarantee will be not spent at the end of the year. It is my understanding that the school committee is interested in using some of the money on funding the beginning stages of the roof HVAC project.
Okay. So, Caitlin, I'm just gonna ask you to slow down for just a little bit because you're going faster than I can, can listen to you and tabulate. So, I appreciate that you want to get through this, but I'm just asking you to slow down just a little bit. You're saying the total amount that we are over in the sped lines is what again?
$21,400.
And where, and the custodial and cafeteria equipment is?
$7,100.
And what is the, you came to $108,000. Where's the rest of it?
Well, that's the, kind of the difference of the areas we're over, the areas we're under. When you take all those things into consideration, it looks like there'll be approximately $188,000 left at the end of the fiscal year.
$188,000 extra?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I thought you were saying that that was our deficit.
No. So, the funding, we're looking at the beginning stages of the roof HVAC project. Our purchasing new blinds. I expect that this will be discussed at the next capital planning subcommittee meeting.
Okay. So, again, just slow down for me just a minute. So, $50,000 for the HVAC roof. And then the blinds.
I want to explore the possibility of finding out who could do blinds, what it would cost to do rooms by rooms with some of what we have, but still leave significant margin there in case of other things which come up, including what was discussed earlier this evening. If something comes out of that that needs to be funded out of this year's budget or some other thing, we don't anticipate.
Sorry, I didn't mean to talk over you. Do we have a capital planning schedule?
No, that's, I was just gonna say, what is the best course of action to make that happen? Like, me email you and then? Like, me email you, and then you include the appropriate people, or me emailing the principal, and then he determines?
Are you like, to schedule us a meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Reach out to Pam Rogers?
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and then, all the appropriate people should be included?
Yeah.
Like, the maintenance, the principal, you, and that way, when we're having these discussions, everyone's at the table?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you. All right, so let's go ahead and get one of those scheduled.
Yep, I'm sending the email now.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any questions so far? Before I...
Yep.
Yep, come on up.
I just wanted to point out, I keep hearing talk of the blinds. That is a town capital planning process that would need to be done and followed. And I would just caution, the roof repair is going to be incredibly expensive and was not planned for. So, I know you guys have a capital planning process, the town has a capital planning process, and I would just like to ask that that works together.
Mm-hmm.
The blinds aren't something the school, there's a process that should be followed, is what I'm asking for, and I keep hearing them talked about, but capital planning for the town has not been looped in at all.
Yep.
So, just wanted to put that out there.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, thank you Caitlin, I think, I think we caught up.
Keep going.
That's it.
Really?
Yep. Okay. Um, was there anything else then that we wanted to ask about the budget? I know you're writing Caitlin, but I just, I don't wanna go on if you have anything you wanna ask.
No, you're good.
Okay, and Mark?
I've heard you have something to say.
Okay. Okay, all right. Um, all right, I think I'm good for the moment as well. Okay. Um, do you wanna move on to the secondary?
Looking at the expenditure report for the secondary?
I'm sorry, what?
Oh, I didn't have, no, I don't have the normal report that I do for secondary, but we haven't had any tuition payments or anything.
Okay, it's on the agenda, so I'm just, I'm just at that point now. Are you, are you, or I should've asked, are you all set with this?
I'm all, I'm set with my whole report.
Okay, all right. So you have nothing to report about Irving Secondary? There's just no expenditures?
Nope, no major expenditures.
Okay, okay. All right, moving on. The principal's report. So you have that in front of you. Looks like we have a hundred and twenty-three enrolled students as of when this was written. No new staff members. MCAS has begun for students in grade three through six. The, an old-school sing was held in April. Many staff are now certified or recertified in CPR, um, thanks to a training that was on April third, so that's good to hear. And the town library donated solar eclipse classes to all the students. And kindergarten had a math night. They continue to post for a school counselor. Now, we noticed that on the, on the website, there's a school counselor and there's a school adjustment, I always get this title wrong, is that the other title?
Yeah, school adjustment counselor.
School adjustment counselor? Is that because you're hoping to just get one of them? Because we don't, we don't have budget for two different people.
Correct.
Okay, thanks. We thought that, we just wanna clarify it. And looks like they're getting ready, they're thinking ahead to next year. First day for children is August twenty-eighth. That's the, pretty much the highlights. And do I have anything else to say? Do you have anything you wanna add to that?
No.
Okay. All right, moving on. Report from the Irving Teachers Association. Do you have any report that you wanna give? Nope, okay. Budget and Personnel Committee report. No report. Union Twenty-Eight Committee report. Next meeting is May twentieth at six thirty. Anybody else have anything else they wanna add to that? All right, so we have a family handbook. We heard a bit of more information about it, so that was helpful for us to hear as well, that it sounds like the handbook was completely rewritten. That answers a question I wish we had had a little bit earlier so that we could make some decision on it. How do the two of you feel about voting on that, or do you want to now with this new information, go back and compare the other, the old, and make sure that it's where you want it to be?
But given some things, I wanna go back and read this more thoroughly and see what things are distinctly, there's certain areas I now have additional questions on, and some things I'd like to see links on. So, I like it by and large, but I need to go through it in more detail, given recent events.
Oh, sorry, again, I didn't mean to just cut you off at the end there. Why don't we, why don't we table it then and put it on our next agenda for May? The seventy van driver. I asked this to be put on, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering where we're at with that position. I've heard that we had somebody hired, but I've not heard anything more about it. I've not heard that it's been implemented, so I'm looking for some sort of an update on that position.
Do I reach out to, to legal counsel? Do we have an agreement finalized with Unit B?
We do not have an agreement finalized with Unit B, but legal counsel has said, in a, in a meeting that you were attending, to keep, continue to move forward with this process, that a final agreement did not need to be in place in order to get this position.
So our candidate has questions about benefits and salary schedule for next year, and we can't answer any of those yet?
Well, you definitely can answer the salary schedule questions because we approved a salary for it, and it was based on the number of hours that were needed. And again, legal counsel did say that those things did not have to be worked out right now, that they could be worked, as we go through the negotiating process, be worked out, and that should not hold up the hiring of a person. We were told that somebody was hired, is that not the case?
We have not hired anyone because there are questions that we haven't been able to answer about the job yet.
These are questions that a person who's asked, he, he, she asked about?
We're not able to provide these answers yet. So to my conversation with, with Pat, that there are still these lingering questions about, you know, how many sick days, and what...
Yes, there are lingering questions because we haven't finished negotiations, but again, I will reiterate that the legal counsel gave the opinion to move forward with the hiring process, and that those questions would be answered along the way.
I mean, there is a contract now.
It should not stop.
Yeah, there is a current...
What Caitlin is saying, what we heard from Pat, is that the candidate wants those questions answered before they go any further in the process.
Did you, something you wanted to add to this discussion, or did you have a different question?
In regard to the seventy, my name's William, I'm with Travel Cuz. I took over as the transportation coordinator for the Gilman U Irving schools recently. Previously, with the new driver training mandates from Massachusetts as the registry's taken over, we were a licensed, independent licensing facility. However, with, after the merger of Beacon, we no longer offer the services of licensing outside. Pat had reached out to me yesterday. I have talked with our general manager and our training instructors. At this time, we don't offer outside fleet training for non-direct employees. I am in the process, I'm gonna try and get resources together that I can present to Pat of other facilities that might offer seventy training, because there are mandates for a minimum two hours or eight hours of an in-service requirement annually to renew that seventy license. I know the candidate that you have in mind currently has one that's about to expire over the summer, and we're, we're trying to get that information so that we can get those eight hours of recertification done, hopefully before the end of the school year. And I should have some answers to get back to Pat by Friday.
That would be great, thanks a lot.
When the principal was here several meetings ago, he announced that the driver had been hired. So I'm unclear as to why that announcement was made, if a driver was not hired.
What I can speak to is the information I've received today from Pat, which I conveyed to Caitlin, that the candidate wants further questions answered relative to the position moving forward, and also that their seventy licensure will be expiring.
Okay, so if these are questions that are in regards to the benefits, please forward them to me so that I can deal with them as part of the negotiating team for Unit B from the school committee. This should not be something that holds that position up. It's frustrating to hear that we were told that a person had been hired, and now we're hearing that, that is not the case. We've owned this van since November, and, you know, this, this process is just, is taking way longer than it should. So please forward me those questions so we can get them answered in a timely manner, and hopefully a candidate hired. In the meantime, I did not notice that there was an ad out for a seventy driver. So if we've not hired anybody, why is there not a current ad out?
I can't speak to that, I'm not part of that hiring process. I think this candidate still is interested, we have those, the questions that need to be answered, as I stated previously, as well as the seventy licensure issue. I will have Pat, who has those questions, forward those questions to you.
Okay, so, but you are the hiring authority, so I am asking you to please put the ad back out. If we do not have somebody hiring now, I'd like the ad to go back out. It would be great if we could hire whomever you have in the pipeline, but if not, we need to keep moving on with this process. And we'll make sure that this comes up in the May agenda so we can circle back, but I'll be in touch before that.
I got a second, but it's beyond frustrating that this idea came forward, you know, more than a year ago, well, no, a year ago now, and, you know, moved forward during the summer, the purchasing moved forward, and the van's been sitting all winter long. And it not only represents, it represents dollars and cents, it represents, you know, appropriate transportation, it represents a job that could, a person could've been hired for earlier. I just want a second. Total frustration.
Yep, yeah.
So is the...
Can you just come up? Can you, yeah, thanks.
So is the van something that could be being used right now if we had a driver that was licensed to use it?
Yes.
Okay, so is the person who they're saying is an applicant, was called by the principal over a month ago and told she was hired for the job? And has not heard anything back from the principal or Pat as she's tried to reach out to them?
You're making statements I don't know anything about, I'm sorry.
It's our mother who was called by the principal and told she had the job. So that's why if this is something, there seems to be a clear lack of communication somewhere, and I think something needs to get figured out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, like I said...
Come, come all the way up.
The biggest holdup right now with the fund, the formal acceptance, is how, my question to you, on the school, the school committee, school board, how can you hire for a position that you know requires an annual training if you don't have the resources in place to provide that annual training to your employee? You, you do teacher in services, the accreditation for the teacher verification, and their annual assessments, reviews, and training. How can you hire a driver without the resources to keep up their credentials if you don't have those resources in place? And if you've had the van since November, why is it now, the Monday after April vacation, we have less than forty days of the school year? Why are we just now being reached out to, to see if we provide those training services still? Where is the eight-month disconnect? If you're asking why someone hasn't been hired, why have you, as the school committee, not reinforced and secured the training requirements and the training needs that your employee needs?
That person who's responsible for that is not us. They come to us on a monthly basis, and we ask them, you know, what's going on, and have you set this up yet? And then we say, here's the money, or whatever. But, you know, we are not the ones that actually do that particular job. That falls on the administration, and it's, and that's why we are intensely frustrated. I mean, I heard frustration in your voice, and I'm just...
This gentleman just hears that. It's my mother, I mean, she, she was offered the job, she said she would accept it, and asked about those training requirements because she hasn't been driving now for over a year. She used to work for Vamp, well, she worked for Travel Cuz a while back. The biggest holdup now is, if it's part of the administration and we've had the van since November, why is the administration not reached out to a training provider or an accredited, you know, a licensed training provider for the registry? And why is that something that you haven't followed up on? If you say, you don't make that decision, but you were told the van is ready, and you want the job posted, before you post the job, you need to make sure those accreditations and require, and training requirements are in place before you hire.
Well, I hear, let me answer. I hear your frustration, and you're asking good questions, and again, we defer to the people that are, that are in charge of doing that, the hiring authority, just like we don't provide professional development to the teachers, we make sure that the money is there to provide that professional development, but it is not our role to provide it. So I agree with you, and I, I hear and understand your frustration, and it's not from a lack of asking. We've asked multiple times and been given multiple different answers, and, and so that is why we are so frustrated with this process. Knowing now what we know, I will continue to, to investigate that, but we are frustrated. This is a budgetary item, if, if nothing else, but as we said, we hired a brand-new, is sitting in a parking lot somewhere. That is not a good use of our money. So it is very frustrating that we cannot seem to get this together.
I, I would say, every month, what, since the beginning of the school year, this has been coming up, and asking for progress to be made. We could talk about numerous areas in which there were, I mean, I'll even put out, the ad, the very first ad was not in a local newspaper, but was placed on School Spring. And I don't know of local people who regularly look on School Spring for jobs. That's number one. Number two, when I heard that it was posted there, I looked for it, and I looked under bus driver, I looked under special education driver, I looked under van driver, and it was not until I thought, wait a minute, or somebody pointed out to me, seven. There was only one ad in the entire state of Massachusetts that started out and was in the category seven. This is part and parcel of, I'll say anger, not just frustration.
Thank you for coming tonight.
And if there's anything we could do, I'd like to know what it is, and, so we could do it.
Yep.
I will stick around and leave my email address.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything you wanna add before I move forward? Okay, all right, we're gonna go on to school of choice vote. Do we have any, I didn't, I have no, I have no information about a school of choice vote. Do we have any information?
Every year, the state of Massachusetts requires that the school committee decide and vote if they are going to be a school of choice. We send that vote to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, so that's why it's on the agenda for the school committee to vote.
That's true, we do do that, but, but usually we get some sort of a report saying, a recommendation from the administration saying, we think we have these openings, we don't think we have any openings, it is our opinion that we do or do not, should or should not. So do we have anything from the administration?
We don't make recommendations, it's a school committee vote. In the past, it has always been that Irving is not a school of choice, that is a school committee decision.
It is a school committee decision, but we do take the recommendation of the administration who's in the building to say, we don't have seats in this class or this group of children, we would not suggest being a school of choice and opening seats in, back and forth, back and forth. So do we have any information about our classes, whether this is something that would benefit the Irving Elementary School, would not benefit Irving Elementary School?
I have no further information. In years past, Irving has always voted not to be a school of choice.
Table the motion.
Yeah, I think...
Yeah, I think it, I don't remember what year, but there was year that there was a possibility and it was presented to us that that current year's fifth grade and sixth grade was extremely low and that if we were looking at any option or wanting to vote yes for whatever reason, that those would be the only two grades that the administration would recommend us voting, if that was our decision. Um, and I just think that's like really helpful to be able to make that informed decision. If, if we're looking and saying, you know what, our capacity is at a max. Th- there are no grades that could accept anything right now. Um, it would, you know, that would be our recommendation is to not, but it's up to the school committee kind of thing. But with not having any information, I can feel one way or another, but that doesn't make, mean I'm making an informed decision because I don't have data to back that decision.
I had asked for a projection of classrooms and students, a student-based statement of what the school would look like next year. Uh, that would have been of help in this decision. So I wanna say once again, I move we table this discussion. It's getting on.
We can table it, but I, but I would further than ask that an evaluation done, be done of the school and of the classes and a recommendation or at least some information be brought to our next meeting so we can make an informed decision at that point whether we want to be a school of choice or not. And if so, what seat would we offer and what grades?
I don't think so.
All right, all right, I'll let it go.
Um, okay, moving on to the DocuSign. I think there was just a miscommunication in the DocuSign, um, program. I, I think we were just taken, um, off guard that it was like being done. I thought we were gonna have a bit of a discussion about it and make sure we all understood how to use it before it was implemented, and so I think that's where the confusion came in. Um, I know we talked about it, um, as a platform for us to use to sign the warrants. I personally don't have a problem with that platform, um, but I'll open it up to the two of you who are also the signers on it.
I guess I was just confused that it was like a one-way or the other way and it couldn't be a mixed option. Is that true?
We, it is our preference to have the signatures on the DocuSign or on the paper. And so kind of trying to watch both and see which ones got signed where and put it together just makes the whole process drag along even more.
Okay.
Um, I do wanna point out that, um, I generally read the warrants in detail. And, um, I have caught a couple of things. Um, and it's very easy when I come in here and I'm looking at the paper to say to someone, oh, excuse me, you can't put this date, I mean, excuse me, you can't put this address of a special needs student on the warrant that is public record. And the person can then turn to me and say, oops, I'm sorry, let me blank that out. And that happened within the last three or four months. I'll say even the last three months. Um, and so using DocuSign, I can find the same thing, although we had to work through a way, you know, I had to use a fair amount of time to figure out how to make DocuSign usable for me on my platforms, 'cause it's, it doesn't work straightforwardly. Um, but it would be harder to correct errors like that when I caught them.
Hey, you're, you can, you're still welcome to come in and look at the paper versions of them, but if we did move to DocuSign, we'd ask that the signatures are on the same page.
So if I came, so if I, I could go, I guess what I could do is I could look at it on DocuSign. Um, or actually what I have to do is I have to download it off of DocuSign, go through it and, and then go back onto DocuSign and sign. Um, but I could go through it that way and then if there is something that I catch, I can call or email and say, hey, correct this.
So, so am I hearing that the, um, the packet will be out there for people to, to flip through? But then potentially, we're either gonna move to, then you at some other point access DocuSign and sign it, or we stay with our, what we're doing now, which is we, we hand sign it.
Mm-hmm.
But the documents will always be there to, to-
Yes, we can provide them here. Yep.
Okay, that, and that was, that's the answer to my question, 'cause I didn't realize you were gonna still have them out there. I thought it was just gonna solely be an online version.
And what's nice about DocuSign is that we can send the warrant to all four of you, so you don't have to come into the school if you can't one week or once, you know?
Yep.
So you'll, everyone will get it and then we could go with, you know, I know that right now there's a two-vote for the warrants. Um, if you wanted to continue with that, it's fine. We could have the first two people that sign it. Now we know it's good to go to the town hall or, um, however you wanna regulate that.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I'm more comfortable knowing again that there is the paper version there. So Mark, you could come in. You could go through it all. If anything needed to be changed, it could be changed and then, and then uploaded. Or I can sit in my living room and do it and then just, you know, and then sign it at my leisure as well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine. I mean, I worked it out. I mean, it took me a few hours to work it out and some extra effort, um, that I wish I didn't have to go through, but, um, and I, I do wanna repeat what I said before. If you end up in a jam and you've got your stack, your actual documents, you know, to send over to town hall and it's a Friday, um, you know, you have to be patient to get somebody when they're there and you have to know to look in the parking lot to know that somebody's there. But I know what desk they go on and I have a key and I'm happy to do it, to drop them off for you, um, on a Friday. So that, I wasn't joking when I posted that email.
Are you speaking to this discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I know with the state, there's a lot of discussion on what isn't, isn't allowed to be electronically signed and a lot of times it has to be wet signed as well. Um, we haven't discussed as a town whether or not we can accept that for official documents like the warrant. So I will take that back and we'll look into it. If there's anything guidance that requires us to do it differently, to, to not do something electronic versus, um, you know, modern age. But I know with dealing with the state, that's not allowed in a lot of cases. And so I don't know if there's any statutes that we have to follow in the same way, so.
Okay.
Just, we'll try to get you that advisement as well. If it has any impact, it may not.
Okay.
So we can go ahead with DocuSign or we need to wait?
I would not until we've confirmed that it is acceptable with council.
Okay.
That'd be my recommendation.
And do you have a sense of how long you think that would take?
To get an answer?
Yeah.
Probably just a couple of weeks at most. I don't think it'd take too long.
Okay. All right, why don't, because we're here, why don't we make, we can do one of two things. We can either table it or we can make a preliminary vote based on, you know, information.
As opposed to go with DocuSign, might make a motion that we go with DocuSign when we have advice of, um, the select board.
So you gotta wait till we get a response?
Yes, when we get a response, we'll shift to that if it's a positive, assuming it's a positive response.
Okay, so the, just so I'm clear, your, your motion is to go ahead with DocuSign unless, or when?
When we receive notification from the select board that that's an appropriate way to go.
Okay.
And I would just add some kind of buffer. So, 'cause I'm guessing you have to like sa- sign, scan everything in and like get it set up in DocuSign. So if you, we found out on Friday that it was good to go, like, do you need a certain amount of time? Or would you like a certain amount of time, like a week after we hear from the town, we can implement it? Or, you know what I mean? I just wanna make sure that we're not saying, okay, the town said yes, Caitlin, now do it. Like, I don't wanna put that kind of pressure. I just wanna make sure that you have ample time to be able to make it happen.
Yeah, whenever we get an answer to that, we can do it on the following warrant.
Okay.
Um, it's, it, that doesn't change the process at all for us, except for when we have it all printed out and ready to go. It gets scanned in, uploaded, and sent to everyone.
Okay.
Okay, so I, I think that's reasonable, right? So you'll just let us know when we say it's good to go, then you just send us back saying, look for DocuSign for the next one?
Yeah.
And then we will, on my end, figure out how to-
Yeah, I just don't wanna run into, like, we were supposed to do DocuSign or we were supposed to do paper and then they're waiting on it for paper 'cause we didn't have it in Doc-, you know what I mean?
Right, right. We just may, make it clear that it's, it's being implemented. All right, um, so you made the motion?
To go when we have the, have word from the select board.
Okay, so do you wanna second that?
I will second that, yep.
Okay, all right, so all in favor of that?
Aye.
Uh, Pi report?
Yes.
Oh, I keep forgetting it's you.
Different hat. I'm trying to make sure I don't miss anything. Um, so we did meet last month. We meet on the first Monday of the month. So our, um, next meeting will be May 6th. Um, the link is posted on Class Dojo and it's at, oh goodness, I think it's at seven o'clock. Hold on. Um, yeah, they're at seven virtually, so you can be at home and join us. Um, they, we have, currently are, um, Pi scholarships out. So there are two Pi scholarships available for current seniors who attended Irving Elementary at some point during their elementary school time. Um, two scholarships, each for $200. Our hope is that one scholarship goes for, um, someone who has chosen to do the typical high school path. Um, and then the other one is for someone who chose to go to like a trade school or a technical high school. Um, and the child that has decided to go to the trade school or tech school doesn't have to be going off to college. They could also be going into a trade. So we try to keep those separate. However, if we only get so many applications and no one from one applies, you know, we'll kinda look at that and make decisions that way. But, um, so if you know a senior who had attended Irving and is interested in applying and hasn't applied yet, um, the applications have been shared out, but you can always email pie@piee@irving.com and someone would be happy to respond and get you an application for that. Um, and then Staff Appreciation Week is coming up. Um, it starts the week of May 6th. And so right before school vacation, Pi sent out, um, paper flowers with a little blurb with some directions on that. And basically, we were requesting that students draw a picture or write on the flower and just share why, um, they appreciate a certain staff member or all the staff members at Irving, like however they wanna decorate them, and then turn them into the office because we're gonna turn the front area into like a bulletin board of just sharing why we appreciate the staff at Irving. Um, and so if anyone needs extra copies of the flowers, they are at the office. We're gonna try to send out reminders to get those flowers turned in. Um, and if your child wants to do more than two, they're more than welcome to do that as well. So we're really excited about that and hope that we have, um, a great turnout of participation so that way when we enter that week, um, we will have a beautiful display on the front. Um, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you. All right, moving on, policy. So we have a, a final vote on two policies, the early childhood education and the development and dissemination of procedures, so. I'm gonna pull those out. Uh, we'll take them one at a time, so first one we'll, we'll tackle is the early childhood education. Again, it's a final vote on that, so, um, Mark, you had added some language. Just make sure that it reflects.
And we did that, we went over the language last time and it's in here. Um, principal or designee will be responsible for the execution of preschool enrollment process. In the absence of the principal or designee, preschool enrollment process will devolve to the superintendent's office.
Okay, and you are happy with that? That is, that was what you asked for?
Yes, yes.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to approve these, this.
So move.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion? Nope, you're good. You're good.
Good.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so, uh, policy I, H-A-X, uh, early childhood education is approved. And then the next one is policy C-H-A slash C-H-C, uh, development and dissemination of procedures. And we did make a couple of changes. They see, they're in there.
Just double checking the grammar of that sentence. It'll work. I think my wife would complain about the grammar.
They're not always, it's, a little legalese doesn't always follow.
Well, we, the, the sentence is inserted and it, that's, that's, messes up the grammar. But I'm not going to say anything. I'm not a, I'm not a grammarian.
You wanna make a motion?
I move we accept C-H-A, C-H-C.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's everybody? All right. Um, we will be going into executive session and according to open meeting law, chapter 30A, section 21A, move into executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining. We will not be coming back out into open session. So I will give my, uh, future business, our next school committee meeting is May 21st at seven o'clock. Next Irving Policy Committee is Tuesday, May 21st, same day, 6:30, so a half an hour before the school committee meeting. Um, and with that, we will-
Are you inviting anyone or is it just us three?
Um, yeah, Caitlin, are you able to stay for that?
Right now.
For, yeah. Um, all right, so I'll invite Caitlin in to join us into executive session. So we will make a motion to, uh, leave open session to move into executive session.
You wanted to give us an email.
And then we have to, well, we still gotta-
Roll call.
Roll call out with this one.
Me, the little I.
Okay, Mark, actually, aye.
Bailey, aye. Okay, so we're gonna move into executive session, so do you wanna give me your thing?